We're going to a technical meeting to order the rise of pledge relations.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Suzy, roll call, please.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Here.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Here.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Here.
And Mayor DeWor.
Here. For the consent agenda, Tom Albert is here tonight, so I'd like to move him to the top of all business. He's going to provide us the legislative update.
I'll make a motion to support the agenda that I presented.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Sue?
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Mayor DeWor?
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweedl?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
And Councilmember Chambers?
Yes. All right. Citizen discussion for items not on the agenda.
Make this fairly quick. Perry Beechman, 924 Riverside Drive. Couple different things. And this was an observation, I was out in Denver last week, visiting my daughter. And a couple of the, and I don't know how Michigan and Lowell gets their funding from the marijuana, whether it's the number of the stores or it's the volume that they do. And I'm not necessarily advocating this, but out in the surrounding Denver area, two counties extended their hours to 11 o'clock and 12 o'clock. And it paid for so much infrastructure because all the surrounding communities, their business closed at eight o'clock. So again, I'm just throwing that as an observation that if funding continues to be a problem that for the city, that they might consider that, look at that. The other, Marty, is we talked about, I raised the money to put up the fence around the cemetery and we had, I think we had a little bit left over. I don't know if it's still being held in a separate account or anything. But I did visit, we were in One Park and they had the porta-johns there. And again, we talked about the porta-johns that are set up in the summer down by the bolt launch. And they had a fence around it on three sides that was certainly much more attractive. And I think we could look at doing something like that. And again, not asking the city if there's still some funds left from that, what we raised to do that. Then lastly, everybody's aware of, you know, what Lowell Pink Arrow mean. Noel Dean, our former coach, was the, the idea behind Pink Arrow, brought that idea. Players play in pink and it's just expanded. And he is now coaching in Georgia. And his wife and his youngest son live there. His youngest son was attending Harvard and was diagnosed this fall with testicular cancer. So this Friday, there's a group of us that are having a fundraiser here in Lowell. It'll be in front of the showboat. And it's to help with expenses that their insurance doesn't cover. But also with this, if we raise a lot of money, which we hope to do, we're going to also use that money for Lowell community wellness or others in the communities that are on a cancer journey. I know that a lot of the restaurants are participating. You can go and eat there, have an enjoyable dinner. Then go down, the event is going to be at the showboat. And in front of the showboat, there will be a band there, auctions. And it'll be, hopefully this Friday, it'll be an exciting night on Main Street. And come out and support the cause. Thank you.
Thank you, Perry.
Eric Barkus, I live at 215 and a half West Main. I'd like to publicly thank Mr. Burns for this excellent article that he wrote in the Ledger last month. I've reread it for the third time and this is just fantastic. You just really put a lot of time and a lot of information into this. I don't know if the public or if you got much feedback on this, but my wife and I really enjoyed this article. And just wanted to thank you for doing that, taking the time for that. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Anybody else for not on the agenda? Close the public comment portion. Senator Roberts?
Well, good evening. Thank you for inviting me to be here tonight to give an update. I appreciate your accommodation and giving me on the schedule. It's been pretty busy in Lansing this term. A lot of changes for me and in Lansing in general. So I'm in a different chamber. I wasn't in the House before, now I'm in the Senate, so that's a big change. Second even bigger change is I was in the majority and now I'm in the minority. So I'm rolling with it and we're learning a lot. But I'll give a quick update on just a few of the big ticket items and have to answer any questions if you guys want after. First big change would be the tax plan that was passed. I did oppose that. I don't think it was fairly applied for all Michiganders. Kind of the biggest two parts of it were they made changes to the senior retirement plan that we have. And then they increased the earning income tax credit from 6% of what the federal had, the federal match would be, to 30%. So it's a big change. I think it would have been a better alternative, and I put out proposals that they revoked down. Their alternative would have been just to raise the personal exemption for both of those plans. The earning income tax credit has a 25% error rate. I applaud the goal of trying to lift people out of poverty and incentivize work. There is some evidence, in all fairness, to show that it does help boost some people out of poverty. But there's absolutely not one shred of evidence to show that it actually incentivized people to go to work. So I think it would have been better, right now we have a personal exemption, I think about $10,000, to boost that up to something like $15,000. The first $15,000 someone would earn would be tax free in the state of Michigan. So something else to advocate for. The senior retirement piece was, first off, it's extremely complicated to even understand. I never actually did fully understand how it's going to be worked out. It was commonly referred to as repealing the pension tax. That was a bit of a misnomer, in my opinion. So, long story short, it's really going to depend on where your retirement income comes from when you're a senior to know what your tax rate is going to be. If it comes from a public pension, you're not going to pay anything in income tax. If you saved in a 401K or some type of private plan, you're going to have the tax, but they changed the exemption threshold. So it's really complicated. Next, a big one last week, we passed out of Senate was right to work repeal and reinstatement of the prevailing wage. Something I think that for you guys in your decision making, that's my understanding. I'm pretty sure that the prevailing wage did not apply to local units of government for local projects. If it would have and it was at one point in time, it would have a pretty serious impact on your guys' budget for construction projects. The right to work, this was disappointing. This was something that was put in place 10 years ago. It's been characterized as being anti-union. It is most definitely not. It's very pro-worker. Basically, it never said, it never prohibited anybody from joining a union or a union being started in the state of Michigan. It just said that nobody can be forced as a condition of their employment to pay union dues or be part of the union. So basically, they could be fired for saying, "I don't want to be a part of the union." I think it helped incentivize unions to be more responsive to their members. And you could see unions that kept the members and unions that didn't. And it was really just dependent on who the leadership was. So I expect the governor to sign those, if not this week, next week or sometime soon. Lastly, and most interestingly, spending, which I think will impact the city of Lowell most closely. So if you start, take the beginning of the year, you start at the beginning of the year. We had $9.2 billion of state surplus dollars. We've done two spending supplementals and the tax, and the tax plan where we had a tax reform, tax changes. So if you take those two spending supplementals, the tax changes, and the governor's exec rec, we went from a surplus of $9.2 billion to a deficit of $1.2 billion. There was an article that came out from the Citizens Research Council that said that deficit was somewhere between $400 and $600 million. From what I'm seeing inside the legislature, from what we're seeing internally, it's actually higher than that. So I don't know if they missed the income tax rate rollback from the income tax. That's part of the tax relief thing. But so either way, we're definitely on a course of overspending this year. The legislature is now in an interesting spot where this Democrat control and they're going to have to make cuts to the exec rec. So it's actually kind of typical for the legislature to have to do that. The governor gets to put out the proposals and that's the starting point. And the legislature has to pare it back. But this is very pronounced. It's a lot higher than usual. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. And then one other thing I'll point out from the exec rec revenue sharing. The governor proposed doing a 5% increase ongoing and a 5% one-time. And that's for our typical revenue sharing. But there was also a new revenue sharing item that was, she proposed doing for public safety only. And that was 5% one-time and 2% ongoing.
Is it in addition? So is it 7% total for public safety?
It is. One thing, one thing that's important to note, this is something that I hope to have to unpack as we go through the budget process, is there's no maintenance of effort requirement for the public safety and the regular revenue sharing. So the way it's written now, it could essentially just be used for a phone swap. So it actually wouldn't have a net increase in many communities for public safety. So that's something I think with a maintenance of effort requirement, regular revenue sharing, that can be, you know, fixed pretty easily. Dollar amount, for us, it's like $2,000, $3,000 to our revenue sharing. But it's dedicated, which honestly, it helps with, kind of what I, the way I look at it is it kind of helps with our current. You can use it for, yeah, the proposal is to use it for recruitment of potentially equipment, things of that nature. I appreciate your time.
Are you familiar with the Revenue Trust Fund? Revenue sharing trust fund?
I am familiar with it, yes. I haven't seen many bills. I have, the bills just came out today, so I haven't even read them yet. So I'll keep an eye on it.
Any questions for the Senator?
When you mentioned that they're going to be taking that surplus, what is they looking at spending that on? What's the majority of that going to?
Death by a thousand cuts, I mean. If you had to come up with, have you ever watched Brewster's Millions? When you had to spend all that money to come up with a thousand different ways to spend it all? It's, couldn't even begin to describe the variety of things that they're saying.
But it's not one just huge pot that we just?
I can tell you where it's not going, debt relief and savings. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, let's go to parking ordinance discussion. If I just, Suzy, could you pull up the spreadsheet, please?
So I did survey a number of communities. And basically, I couldn't put it in your packet because it was, it was too big. The paper was too big to print, so I just had to, I had to put it up here. So biggest thing I asked was whether or not they had time limits on parking, parking, how they handle enforcement, whether there was any short-term parking or loading zones, any overnight parking restrictions, permit systems for the downtown residents, and if they have designated areas. And basically, I, so I actually sent it to about 16 communities, but I got responses back from Fremont, Hastings, DeWitt, Whitehall, Aligon, Ionia, and Owasso. And I can tell you, and I did, and I did share this with you, pretty much everyone does it differently. Every, every community does it based on their needs. A lot of times, it's the police department handling it. Some of the communities I had, basically, when it comes to time limited parking, because of the chalking tires, pretty much everyone I talked to said they are not enforcing the time restrictions. The, the only one that really was pretty, they had, they had different ranges. Like for example, Owasso would have, they would have two-hour off-street parking, but they had lots that ranged from four to 72 hours. And the person that did it was a 94-year-old parking attendant. But he's retiring at the end of the month, so they don't know if they're going to be doing it anymore. But they, they, it's really been all over the place. The only one that actually has set aside anything for delivery, short-term delivery, short-term parking was Aligon. They were the only ones that did. If you just scroll back, Suzy, just a couple of things that I highlighted. For example, when I talked to Ionia, Ionia has two-hour off-street parking, but they don't enforce their lots. And they have nothing for their lot, no time limits for their lots, and they don't really enforce it. Hastings hardly enforces due to chalking tire restrictions. Aligon doesn't restrict any overnight parking in lots, but they do on the streets. Whitehall doesn't have any overnight street restrictions, but they do on the parking lots. And then I kind of explained Owasso. So really, it's all over the map, what other, what other community's done. One other, one other community, DeWitt, they actually have an ordinance for two-hour parking, but this was over 10 years ago when the city manager came there. They weren't enforcing it, so they actually just took down the signs and don't enforce it, even though they technically have an ordinance on their books, but they don't enforce it. I tried to, I tried to kind of answer all the questions that you had had. And this is what I got back on it. Also, if you can go to the map, Suzy, please. I did ask Regis to put some map overlays together. I overlaid the downtown in comparison to the 28th Street Meyer. If you look, the whole size of the downtown is pretty close to the whole size of the Meyer, which I can tell you that maybe with the exception of the Riverwalk, the Christmas festivities, you've never really had it where there's no parking in the downtown. I've never, I've never, I've never really seen it in the six and a half years I've been here. And granted, it might not be exactly in front of your business, but, and I understand that there's parking in other areas, but if you look in comparison with the Meyer, for example, it's, you could almost put the whole downtown on that property. If you could scroll down to the next one, Suzy. This is the Lowell Meyer. It's a little bit smaller, but just wanted to compare that for size. If you go to the next one. And I put that, and green is all the off-street parking and the purple is our parking lots. This is the, this is Center Point Mall in Wyoming, just another, another comparison. And then I also did Woodland Mall. And Woodland Mall, that property is much larger than our downtown. So I tried to just kind of give you some context as to our scenarios compared to some other, other scenarios. And I, we're supposed to, I can't remember if we're supposed to actually bring the overnight ordnance back for the six, two to six, I couldn't remember. Okay.
We just added it to the major months, right?
Yeah. So we still need to bring that back. But yeah, if that's what you want. But we, I wasn't sure if we were supposed to bring that back or not. So that's kind of the research I've done. I don't know if there's anything else you'd like me to look into on the matter?
I think you've done a really good job. All right, Suzy, you have letters regarding the parking?
My name is Michael Lowery. I'm a business owner at 216 West Main, Suite 2. Even though I am in attendance today, I have, I'm having this red inch record because I'm not typically a public speaker. However, if you have any questions, I can definitely stand up and answer them. As you know, our business has been in town for almost 10 years. We first started out at 204 West Main Street and we had parking availability problems. And due to this, we ended up in moving to 98 West Main and had building issues causing us to move to 216 West Main in 2019. I understand that we do not want to discourage people from staying longer than two hours in tourism. I would love people to stay downtown longer than two hours. And I think that we have other parking lots that work perfectly for people in that circumstance, and they are not much farther away. Personally, for my business, people do not typically need longer parking. And when those spots out front are full, they choose to not stop in. Also, a good chunk of my customers have mobility and come in CBD and wellness products. Even though the signage wasn't already actively monitored, I still believe that it stopped a large amount of people from parking there for long extended periods of time. Since the signs removal, I already have seen a large decrease in accessible short-term parking for my customers. I hope you, we can consider removing the two-hour parking limit. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Removing?
He said removing.
I'm guessing you meant restoring?
He's right here.
Yes.
In the second letter for parking, City Council, it's on you. Lowell is growing. The available parking we have was, is, and will be an issue. Parking ordinance 23-02 needs to be rewritten. It is now clear that all three sections of the ordinance have problems and need to be fixed. The permits for overnight parking include too much personal information that is displayed visibly on windshields. The overnight parking restrictions along Main Street year-round doesn't make any sense. Should only be November 1st through April 1st to allow for snow removal. The two-hour parking in the business district along Main Street is crucial to the success of our many small businesses and needs to be reinstated. City Council, be proactive on this issue. Budget for a parking enforcement officer and hire this person. Clearly define the parking limits in the overnight sections of this ordinance and clean up the parking permit requirements. Appreciate the income, the input coming from the many small business owners and recognize the need for enforceable, limited parking along Main Street. Whatever you do, it needs to be enforceable. The Lowell Police Department needs to be inherently involved in writing any new or changed parking ordinances, because when the chief of police states he will not enforce parking limits, then any ordinance is rendered completely useless. Speaking of enforcement, a two-hour parking limit is actually a four-hour parking limit. Police begin their own two-hour clock after receipt of a reported two-plus hour violation. With the same application, a three-hour parking limit becomes six. A four-hour parking limit then becomes eight. Anything greater than the original two-hour parking limit defeats the purpose of ensuring turnover of parking spaces in the downtown small district, business district. Clearly reinstating the two-hour parking limit is not met in any way to deter shoppers and visitors from spending sufficient time in our town. It simply allows for enforcement in those situations where parking meant to be available to the many may end up monopolized by the few. Karen Wade.
Any other one you have is?
For 919, no questions.
All right. Any other public comment about parking ordinances?
Just a, has anybody thought about meters, like they do up in Traverse City?
Well, you would have to meter every parking lot, every parking space in the city. And I don't think businesses would be really happy about that.
I think in Traverse, they don't do everything alone.
They also have much more parking.
Well, we have a very unique situation with the rivers and the limited space. So we have to come up with something that's going to help everyone. And I would think meters, even if it's just on certain areas, might be an option.
And Traverse City has a walk to meter pay and stuff.
Yes, exactly. And they also have the farmer's market behind it, where they have lots of people coming and going and different activities. And it really works out, because it is, you just do what you say.
Your decisions I've had with business owners, the majority of them, from what I understand, would not be in favor of that.
Well, it might be something you might think about, or put out there.
I was just recently down, I mean, and the most I could park at a meter was two hours. If I needed to go back, I needed to put a little money in, et cetera. So again, then you got to think, how do we go about enforcing the meter situations that we face today too? So again.
There is, yeah, there is, yeah, they were pretty right on getting tickets.
All right.
Carrie, what's your address?
820 North Jefferson.
Greg Cantil, 403 North Washington. At the last meeting where we discussed this, I asked if, we had a complainer, was there a problem we were trying to solve? And we didn't really know if there was anything. And you guys are going to maybe look at some of the videos and see what proposed or caused you to lean towards the no overnight parking on Main Street year-round. Some article, I think, said, Marty, that you brought it up in one meeting, that it was a concern of yours about parking. But I'm a little concerned, I don't know that we have that big a problem, that that big a change needs to be brought in. For the Main Street end, we have guests that arrive after we're closed. They have a door code to get in. We can say, "Yeah, we'll leave a parking pass for you on the desk." And then they bring their bags in and it's a trip back out to wherever they parked. A little bit of an inconvenience I've taken care of. Two parking tickets in 12 years there. And those were cars that were ticketed on Main Street. Main Street's a big deal because the county plows have to come through and plow that. That's a bigger deal. The city has been great about kind of looking the other way for Main Street and guests. It doesn't say, "Welcome to Lowell," when you come out to a ticket. That's why I always go and try to make sure they don't get one. And meters, I think, are just going to be a problem. People don't shop, there's meters.
That is really bizarre.
Okay, we're not, not doing a back and forth.
But I just, I don't know what was really broken that we need a lot of changes. I think it worked well the way it was, even in the residential parking. People park on the streets when there's no snow coming and gracefully aren't ticketed by the police department. You could be out there writing tickets every night of the winter, but you don't. It's reserved for when it needs to be done, when they're going to plow. Lowell's a great community. I just think we need to continue what we're doing. It's not broke, let's not change it.
Thanks, Perry. Well, I think we did realize that it was an oversight, making the parking thing year-round, right? And we're taking steps to take that back to the winter months, so it's uniform throughout the city. The permit thing has been corrected as far as I'm concerned, right?
Yes.
So those two concerns are already taken care of. So I guess now we just need to figure out what we want to do on Main Street. I've heard the suggestion of a four-hour uniform on Main Street. I've heard the suggestion of, I think Perry and I were talking, of a loading zone only per block. So these businesses that do have people just coming to pick up furniture or, you know what I mean? Or even a.
Running in and out of the coffee shop.
Yeah. But I feel like if it's repeat business, those spots, not the loading zone spots, but the other spots, police themselves, right? Because if you're going to the coffee shop, you're going to do what you're going to do either way, right? So that spot then either becomes open. And then the same with loading and unloading, Perry.
My conversation was, I think, is a compromise. Again, I think from November 1st to April 1st, no parking on any of the streets. But during, you know, from April 2nd or whatever you pick, you know, till the next October, Halloween, whatever, that you can park on anywhere on the streets. We talked about, talked about, and I think you need not to specifically to each a customer, a business, but on each block, I would put one or two. And again, I wouldn't call them loading zones, because I'm used to like going into big cities and loading zones are exactly that, loading and unloading for UPS, for truck drivers, for different deliveries. And I would just call it short-term parking. And I would put on each side of the, of the blocks that you can, in the middle of the block, I would put a short-term, and I don't know if you can do it, but we talked about it, is I would paint that white, that whole, that short-term white and put on it big bold letters, you know, 15 minutes. And I think it's, I think in this situation, we just have to, I mean, probably not everybody's going to be happy, but a compromise that kind of looks at the big picture.
Yeah. Thanks, Perry. Hi, Kimberly Louie, I'm Riverside. I definitely agree with what Perry said. My other concern really, though, is something needs to force a change.
My other concern really, though, is something needs to force a changeover. If we don't have any type of a tournament on, on, on Main Street, people literally can park there for a week during the summertime, and we don't want that. And I know you don't want to get right in the middle of, you know, we are responsible. We're telling our employees not to park out and all that. But people living in apartments or having friends over that, they're not going to care about that, right? So at least on Main Street, and maybe even some of the ones that are really closely adjacent to that, to at least force some turnover so that people don't use that as long-term parking is awesome. You've got a lot of other good parking for long-term parking. I fully agree with that. It's just on Main Street, we need that changeover somehow, and that's what we feel we're still missing. Thank you for your.
Thank you. My other concern is that we, I believe, have maybe failed a little bit in advertising where we do have parking lots. And I think a lot of people think the southwest lot is for King Milling employees, you know, and it's not. And, you know, we do, we need to advertise where we have these city lots. We need to advertise where we have the EV stations. And I think that failure ultimately falls on us, but.
Aren't we getting some signs?
Yes, we, we've, we've put one sign up over in the museum, but we need it for the opposite direction. And then we do have signs in order for the Broadway lot. And I don't, I also don't think it's a bad idea for.
They'll go up this week, okay.
Sorry, Dan. I don't think it's a bad idea either to have a map made that can be cut and pasted onto Riverwalk Flyers, Girls' Night Out, Chocolate Stroll, Wine About Wednesday, you know, the hundreds of events that we run year-round. It's just a cut and paste map of, hey, these are city lots. So if you're going to come and stay all day, please do, but. And I don't think assigning individual spots to individual businesses, like they were saying, is necessarily fair because you don't know the terminal, it's the type of the business, you know? Sweet Seasons could tomorrow decide they want to move to this great bakery building, you know what I mean, and then now you have 15-minute parking outside of a, you know, anything. It could be anything.
Yeah, and maybe what you do is if you're going to go that route, you standardize it. So you either, you either put the 15-minute parking spaces on, on the end of the building blocks or the middles, you do one or two. And, but you do it consistently for basically everywhere we have on-street parking in front of the buildings on Main.
It should be per block, I think, not per business.
Yeah, you would want to do it. But basically, you can, you have the, you have the geography of the buildings that you could.
And also, if they're dedicated and you have, like Mike says, the customers with their mobility issues, as long as he knows where those spots are, now he can say, I'd be happy to run it out to you. Or, you know what I mean?
Right.
Or stuff, it can be, as long as it's consistent, then people can plan how they're going to make it work. But I do think, I don't think two hours the answer because I do believe personally that two hours is a deterrent, but I think a four-hour with a couple of loading zones is a, is a compromise, a fair compromise, and I think you do have to have some kind of. But that's my opinion.
So I had a thought of what if we did reinstated two-hour parking on-street parking, and then our lots had no timeline? That way, if you're going to stay, there's lots available for you. If you have a meeting going, you're on the street.
Excellent.
That way, you're not changing, you know what I mean? Like putting in loaded, or, you know, I liked actually how you called them not-loading zones, which I appreciated, more short-term parking. I think that's a bigger change for people to get used to. And then you're going to have business owners like, hey, this is a short-term parking. You can park, you know, and then it's just like more to get used to. I think this changes.
Yeah, but you can call them, you know, 15-minute quick stops, or you can call them whatever you want. But I think Perry's right. I think they do need to be distinguishable from the other parking spots as well. Because at that point, they're, now you don't have to wait on a complaint-based enforcement because if the police are leaving town or coming into town, they know where those dedicated spots are. So if they're going to a call and they're coming back and seeing the same car, now you know it's been one 15 minutes. But it's never going to be perfect unless somebody wants to fund a parking enforcement officer, but I don't know.
Your revenue would, your, your, your revenue would never pay for that.
No, right, sure.
And it would come out of your general bond, which would take away your police and your street and your parks and everything else.
Yeah, just two comments. One is sometimes just having the rule there. Most people are going to try and find or follow the rule, and if they see a sign there, if they see it, they're going to try and do it. I'll be a little bit of a jerk. I worked for a large company for a long time, and we dealt with government stuff and all that. Well, sometimes they would say our security was by emergency confusion because it wasn't always where it needed to be. It is now, you know? I'm not going to say that. I would say what company.
What's where you're located?
Well, won't say that. So sometimes just by saying that you have the policy and that it's there, that kind of takes care of some of the problems. So I still do think, you know, forcing some type of rollover. And I think there's a couple lots where you might still want to put that too. There's one near us. I'd say there's one right across the street from Flat River. Those kind of make sense. Once you get over kind of behind, well, yeah, the one that's like right over here, that one, that one's not so important. That one, long-term, that kind of works. So I would really look at that a little more. And, oh, there was one, I was going to say. Not a big deal. But those are the main things. I think the, the short-term thing, and then at least taking care of some of that.
I think you're right. I think the sign is a lonely deterrent. And no rule or law is 100% enforceable anyways. So, jails or.
Susan Stevens, 610 North Jefferson. I've seen in historic towns, small towns across the country, because we travel a lot, there are communities who will have building owners allow them to paint parking in-back signs right here on the side of the building with a big arrow that points that way. If you did that for a couple of these lots, if you could get business owners or building owners to agree to that, that might help people who don't live here figure out that Main Street is not the only place to park.
That would look great on the new King Milling building.
You can shoot down there tomorrow. You can shoot down there tomorrow and talk to them about it?
I'll just do it tonight.
Tell them it was Marty's idea.
Since I retired, I've spent a lot more time downtown, traveling back and forth and walking the community. And I was sat during the daytimes from, from 10 to 3, there are an awful lot of available parking spots. So my question is, is when are these times so critical? Is it weekends that you guys are having issues with, with availability to pull up in front of a store? Because there is, there is an awful lot of room most days that I've seen over the last two weeks.
Very sporadic for a weekend.
Is it?
Well, the other thing too is it's more of a hot-button topic now, I think, because it's not sunny and 65 degrees, where you don't mind walking an extra couple of blocks, right? Where I think if you're having this discussion in June and people are warm, they're a little more. They're a little nicer. But I do think, you know, listen, you can say what you want about us and whatever, however you think we handle business, but we did something, and we recognized we could probably use a little bit more work. So we brought it back multiple times. So I think that's what you would want from your elected officials. So I, I don't know what, I mean, I think the permit thing has been taken care of, so that's important. I think the winter parking, overnight parking is going to be uniform across the city. I think that's important. I think we just need to chip away at what to do on Main Street. And I walked in, Eric, and I had lunch last Tuesday, and exactly what you said. We went at 1:00, I think, and I didn't have a problem finding a spot.
Could I park right in front of Billy Weaver's? No, but I could park two or three down.
You can, but it's probably going to pull your valve stem. Yeah, I parked across the street, and there was spots, we went to Rio, and there were spots on both sides of me, and there were spots on the other side, and they had even had a trailer there unloading restaurant supplies that was taking up three spots. So it is sporadic, but I do think it triggers on weekends. It triggers in the summer.
It also starts getting heavier at 4:30, 5:00.
When people are on.
Yeah. The rest, I mean, that's a good thing because we have a lot of choices of where to go to eat. So people are coming to town to eat.
I've said it every meeting, and I'm going to get into a cliff tax money-on-the-showboat type routine, but parking is a pretty great problem to have, right?
When I was looking at the chart, I, the first thing I thought of when I saw Ionia's, they'd kill to have a parking spot in their downtown. And that's kind of what they told me.
Maybe we do that. We give people permits there, and then we'll just give a shuttle. Runs them over here to shop, do whatever they want. The ride here is free. If you want to ride back, that's where you're going to pay.
And 50 years ago, they had coin meters in Ionia.
Yeah, I don't, I think meters creates way more of an enforcement problem than, you know, what we're dealing with.
Downtown just is not that big.
No.
This isn't, I mean, this isn't Traverse City, Ann Arbor, Grand Rapids, Northville, Birmingham. Those places, Eastland, I mean, those places don't make sense. I just think they make sense here.
And even then, most of the places like Grand Rapids, they're only metered certain times, right? So when we're having the problems, or likely nights and weekends, which are un-metered times anyway, downtown, you can go park on the weekend. And there's zone, there's plenty of zones down Monroe where the meters are not on Sundays.
I think of progress.
Yeah. Oh, no, you can go in, but they try to get you to get out.
Right.
Just like my shuttle idea. So I guess I just need to know where you guys want to go next with it. I'm in favor of the hot zones or not loading zones, you know, in-and-out spots, but if they need to be clearly marked, if that's the direction we're going to take.
Do we make them 15 minutes, 30 minutes, 20 minutes?
15.
Typical pickup of furniture. Are they here to meet us company here tonight?
Yeah, they're here.
Okay. Typical time to load a vehicle up with furnitures, whatever? If you have that special zone in front of your store or right by it.
Flip a coin.
Okay.
Do we go?
You try.
Do we go two hours, three hours?
I think two hours is a deterrent. I think four hours is, six hours maybe by the time, you know?
There is a number between two and four.
No, there's not.
Yes, I researched it. Lowell chatter before I get my.
It's almost real life. It's this one. So I, yeah, I.
Well, we already have the two-hour signs, right?
Yes, we do.
I propose that we, I, what am I supposed to do here?
Make a motion.
Make a motion that we restore the two-hour signs and then come up with.
So are you, where are you, are you putting the two-hour signs everywhere? Where are you designating them? I, I need to know.
Where we took them from.
Main Street.
Well, we also talked about, we have parking lots here.
No, on, on Main Street.
Main Street.
I like the idea of not, I mean, we're, we're trying to get more people. That one by King Milling, everything will be packed, and that thing will have two cars in it. Because I think people look at it and think, oh, that's not for me. That's for, even when they have events down at the old theater.
Yeah.
People are hesitant to park in there.
And even like Marty's lot, if you don't drive back there, you can't see it from the road coming down Main Street. You know what I mean? And then there's a lot behind your store, but people see the one next to it, and that's full, so they go, oh. You know what I mean? So we definitely need to do a better job of telling people where we have graciously provided all this parking.
What I'm suggesting is we do one thing at a time. Maybe tonight, we restore the two-hour signs to Main Street, get that done. And then figure out where we want to make a 17 and a half-minute parking spot.
I'm on math today.
Well, that's not fine.
I would like to see, if we're going to change, put the 15, 20-minute, do two spots per block. Then that, yeah, one at one side, one at the other, however it works out.
You mean north-south, or you mean two every block?
Every block.
North and south, so two on the north or two on the south? If you have, just like, for example.
So you're talking about four spots per block, right? If you're on both sides of the road? No, just one on each side.
One on each side. One per lot.
And then we're starting from balls up to the corner?
Hudson, you mean?
Hudson, that's the same place that we're going to.
Yeah, the Jefferson.
Park, and once you're past that, it'll be.
And then make it, make it a 20-minute, and I probably should feel if, if you're going to do it, make it a half-hour or a half.
So you're talking about two, two-hour parking for all of Main Street, and then one 30-minute spot each block, each side? That's, is that your motion?
Sure.
Tom support? Close motion?
Motion and a second. Any discussion on two hours for Main Street, one 30-minute loading zone per block per direction?
One thing I just want to ask is that, and understand that our officers are, it's good, they're, we're going to have to get a call line because our officer, I mean, the 15-minute, probably a little easier catch, but if we're going to be asking our officers to go proactively enforce two-hour parking, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, that's where, we already know that it's going to be an issue, so two turns and four.
The majority of people.
It's a deterrent. The signs are a deterrent enough, and then we can handle what Lowell enforcement.
I just wanted to make that clear, so.
No, absolutely.
Well, Jim's retired. He can enforce it.
I can't be on this committee and enforce it. I talked to Mike about it. I took a hard time. I cannot do it.
What if we get you a hat?
I mean, one of the squad cars.
No.
Motion and a second for two-hour parking to return on Main Street and a 30-minute loading zone per block per direction. Any other discussion?
I would just say one thing is for the council to reach out to the chamber and to the businesses to get employees to park someplace other than Main Street. I mean, I think that's going to take care of a lot of the issues that retailers have had.
And I think the majority of the businesses are doing that, right?
I think the police themselves.
I think there's one or two that doesn't enforce it, and then their employees kind of see it. And they're like, oh, the A ship parked here, so the B ship. But I do think for the majority of businesses downtown, they're doing a pretty good job of enforcing. So motion and a second, and discussion is closed. We'll vote suit.
Mayor DeBoer?
No.
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Yankovic?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
No.
Councilmember Groves?
Yes.
Let's now open the public hearing for 990 North Washington. We'll start with, Susie, you want to read that letter now so you're not?
Dear Councilmembers, City Manager, Lowell residents, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting, but I am submitting this written note to be publicly read and added to the comments.